So, good evening, everyone. This is the Town of Eastchester Planning Board Meeting of May 28, 2020. If everyone would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public, to the republic, to the nation indivisible, and to liberty, which is for all, just for all. And this is going to follow the same format of all of our planning board meetings. So, the next item on the agenda is the roll call. So, Mr. Phil Nemisak.
Present.
Jim Bonanos here. Mark Cunningham.
Present.
Louis Campagna.
Present.
Also present today, as always, I'll just tell you who they are. Margaret, Director of Planning, is here. Robert Tedesco, the Deputy Town Attorney, is here. The Towns Consulting Engineer, Joseph Tramelli, is also here. And the Towns Traffic Engineer, Philip Greeley, is here. The minutes, usually we approve minutes of previous meetings, but in the benefit of saving time, we'll do that in another meeting. And just some sort of guidelines on the public hearing portion. As all meetings, we're going to hear from the applicants, we're going to hear from our consultants, we're going to, we, the board, are going to ask questions of the consultants from the applicant and the applicant himself. And then we're going to open a public hearing if it's not open already. So, for the public agenda, the public hearing portion, we're going to, when we say the public hearing is open, you are going to, I'll read exactly, use the raise hand feature on Zoom, that's star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mr. Tedesco will acknowledge you and invite you to speak. And then, please, make sure to unmute your mic, because we all do that all the time and we can't hear you. So, make sure you unmute your mic, state your name and address, and then address your comments to the board members. So, we'll do that just like we would at any other planning board meeting.
Chairman, just one thing I want to add to that. For the members of the public that wish to make comments, I will invite you to unmute yourself and make your comment. As soon as you're finished, I'm going to lower your hand. If there is an additional comment, you will have to raise it again, so that you can be recognized if we need to do that.
That's a good point. So, then, just before we start with the applications, I'd like to say thank you for everyone for participating. We've done lots of dry runs. We think we'd be able to do this. Margaret's done a great job getting us all together. We're hoping it's going to be perfect. If it's not, just bear with us. Some of us have been doing this for months and we still don't have it right, but I think we should be able to get through this together with board members, applicants, and viewing public. So, thank you, everyone.
If I could add as well, that we didn't have a meeting at the end of March, we didn't have one at the end of April. We have a bit of a backlog to get through, and we have the added complication of having to do this virtually remotely. So, you know, we would like to get through this in a reasonable amount of time. But of course, we do want to hear from everyone. That's the whole purpose of having a meeting such as this. So, we will try to be concise, right?
So, if I could piggyback on that, I think we would like to streamline this. So, applicants, we're concerned, we want to see everything you have, but we're most concerned about site plan things and elevations, plan, you know, floor plans, yes, maybe, but let's sort of stick to the things that we want to talk about. Please, as you said, Phil, keep it as concise as possible without sacrificing content. And please, the public, if you're listening right now, let's keep questions to a minute, not to a minute, I'm sorry, let's keep, you know, your questions, whatever needs, but please don't repeat if there's other public people listening, please don't repeat questions that have already stated. Okay, that's everything I got. So, then, we'll do what we always do. The first application is 19-42, Five Ray Place.
And just give me a minute to kind of set the applicant up, which will just take a second. And then I have... Hold on, sorry about this. I've got a couple of people here. There we go.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Yes.
I'll turn it over to Ed.
Let's see, and Ed should be up too. Let me check on him.
Can you hear me, Margaret?
Yes. So, Ed, are you calling in from, by a phone?
No, I'm, do you hear me? I'm actually on my iPad.
Okay, so, yeah, we, there you are. Yeah, okay, we have all of you now.
All right, wonderful. Good evening, everyone. My name's Ed Vogel, I'm with Warshower, Malusi Warshower Architects, and we're here to present the project for Five Ray Place. And what we're going to do is, we do have some graphics to share, and Rick has that, so if you don't mind giving Rick the screen, so then he can show that and I'll walk through the project.
Margaret, Anthony, Anthony Nestor's actually going to take that. There we go.
Okay, yeah, and you can, you have total control of that, so you guys can...
You've got the screen.
Go ahead, yeah.
All right, wonderful. So, good evening, everyone, and let's see how this all goes tonight. Our mission tonight, by end of the meeting, or the end of the hearing, we're hoping that we would have a negative declaration and be referred to the zoning board of appeals. So, that's our goal for this evening, and we'll present our case for that. As mentioned, there's been a few meetings. Since October 2019, we have met with the town and town departments and worked through some issues that were raised, such as fire access, fire hydrants, traffic, off-site improvements, and stormwater management, among others. So, right now, I'm just going to provide an overview of the project to refresh everyone's memory, and I'll be going relatively quickly. So, why don't we go to the next image, next slide?
So, I guess everybody can see my screen.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, the project is Five Ray Place, and it's within the red circle area. It is close to White Plains Road, the intersection of White Plains Road and Brook Street, where White Plains Road is a commercial corridor, and then just to the south and to the west of this project is a residential neighborhood. So, the site lends itself as a transitional zone between the commercial and residential, and we've elected to put in a multifamily project. There would be 21 units in this project, and the site is in the RB zone, and we've elected to evoke the M700 multifamily zone, which is permitted in the RB zone. If we go to the next slide, we'll talk about the site topography a little bit. So, the site is actually very unique in that it has already two parking lots, and we bridge one completely and half of the second. The one we completely bridge is on the lower level, and then the one we partially bridge is on an upper level. And there are substantial retaining walls from our site, and then others working their way down toward White Plains Road. And then we're, and then, yeah, we can zoom in, great. And those two fields, we've respected that topography, thereby minimizing impacts to, and the relationship to, the adjoining properties. I'd like to stop here and just speak a little bit about zoning, because that plays into this. There is a curve, and I don't know if we can put the cursor across the curve, there is a setback from the residential zone, there's an R6 zone that is partially in the supermarket parking lot, and then a wooded area to our west. That curved zone is 150 feet from the residential zone, and so we had this additional zoning requirement that we're going to be speaking about. So, from a zoning aspect, I'm grouped, I've mentally just grouped them into three categories. One is base building height for the primary zone that we're in. Height is relegated by two things, stories and feet. So, the maximum is four stories, we're asking for an additional story to make it five, and then height is 45 feet, and then that additional story adds a little bit more than 10 feet. The third component to height is the bulkheads, and as the building moves up, so do the bulkheads, and again, they're asking for roughly a 10-foot bump in height. The second category that I want to talk about is also related to height, but it is with regards to the residential R6 zone and that 150-foot setback line that I mentioned. There, building height, both in stories and feet, have increased. So, for stories being two and a half stories, we're asking for four, and then height from 30 feet to roughly 50 feet. Then bulkheads also relate to that in height, that residential setback, and there, the same dimensional increase from 40 feet this time to roughly a little under 60 feet. The third category of variances is a little bit of a few items. So, number one is impervious coverage, we're allowed 70%, we're roughly 72% of impervious coverage. And then regarding parking, required is 33, and we're asking for a reduction of two parking spaces to 31. And then there's a travel aisle for vehicles, the requirement is for a 25-foot travel aisle for maneuvering, and we're asking to reduce it to a more standard 24-foot travel aisle. So, those are the variances, and that's what the site plan depicts for you. If we move to the next screen, Anthony. This is the building, and you mentioned early that you don't get too involved with the floor plans, but if we zoom into the first floor plan, which is the upper left corner, you can see here that we have our main lobby and mail happening with parking, as I mentioned, in that lower parking field, and then there's some utility services that come in. If we pan down to the second floor, I mentioned that was that upper parking lot, and you can see the entry there too off of Ray Place, and then the parking is underneath the building, again with some building services and a lobby. If we move to the third and fourth floor plans, this just depicts a typical layout of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. There are seven on a floor. Of the seven, there are six one-bedroom units and one two-bedroom unit. The fifth floor, or the top floor, is similar in layout, but there are some small nuances to it. If we pan over a little bit to the right, this shows a roof with a roof terrace and some green roof areas, and being an amenity for the residents, they're able to come up here and enjoy. So, let's move to the next sheet, which are the elevations. Oh, I'm sorry, the unit plans, and this just depicts the one-bedroom style and the two-bedroom style in the unit plans. The two-bedroom unit is where the cursor is now, that unit is approximately 1,060 square feet, and then the one-bedroom units range in size from 700 to 800 square feet approximately. Our next image regarding elevations, which you've seen the front, and here you can see that we've worked with the architecture of the building, and we've created a formal appearance. There is a pronounced base to the building, then there's a body, and then there's a crown or a top to the building, being the manstar roofs. So, the base of the building on the first floor was for parking, the second floor or the second tier is also majority parking with units in that middle portion and tucked under the roof mansards. The facades not only are broken up horizontally, but also vertically by having strong corners, and those strong corners are accented vertically by the window bays that we've created through there. That architecture is brought all the way around the entire force facades, so we have the front, which is Ray Place, which is to the west, and then we have on this sheet to the bottom of the south elevation, and you can see here the four-story nature of that. If we go to the next slide, you can see the rear at the top of the east elevation, and again, we have the same architecture and residential scale and feel to the type of windows and the feel of the materials, and then to the north elevation, which would be the left side. This is better depicted in the next two images that we have, and that is the rendering of the facade. So, this is the view from Ray Place, and you can see the vertical, the strong corners and the vertical features, and then the horizontal makeup between the base, the body, and the top. And if we go to the next image, this is from Ray Place, the next image is from White Plains Road Route 22, and you can see in the foreground the CVS. And our building sets up on the knoll of the crest of Ray Place and cascades down toward Brook Street. Our next slide is regarding the building materials, and this is what we presented back in February. We had a relatively light-colored gray for the roof, and a white brick for the body, and a rusticated darker brick for the base of the building. This was accented with the white bays as they work up, holding those corners, and we had some black mullioned windows and frames. It's a very formal and looking building. With some feedback that we've received from the board, being that the white of the building was very light, as a team, we've looked at it again, and the next slide is a variant to this that we're pleased to present as well. And here, what we've done is we've darkened up the roof to a middle, medium gray, kind of a more slade-ish looking gray. The brick that holds the corners of the building, the vertical accents, are more of a cream, they've softened up a little bit more into the cream side, and then the field of the building between those vertical features is a cementous clapboard, hardy plank, for example, and that color would be a cobblestone, which is even deeper in the beige family. Unfortunately, you know, we're not presenting the true materials for the board to see tonight because of the virtual meeting, so the representation might be a little bit off in all of this, but it's the best we can do at the moment. That wraps up and concludes my presentation for the architecture, and I'll turn this back over to Anthony to carry on with the site engineering aspects.
Actually, Ed, I'll take over here.
Oh, Rick, go ahead.
If you don't mind, Ed.
Yeah, oh, go for it.
Good evening, board. My name is Rick Bolander from JMC. We are the site civil engineers and landscape architects on the job. Since our last presentation on February 27th, we've had the opportunity to either sit down, speak over the phone, or through emails, speak with the towns consulting engineers, Mr. Joe Tramelli and Mr. Phil Greeley, a representative from the fire department, Mr. Tom Pintavale, a representative from the highway department, Mr. Rocco Latella, and a representative from the town, Ms. Margaret Uly, who's been tremendous throughout this whole process. We feel we have addressed most, relatively all comments, and the comments that have yet to be addressed, we decided in conjunction with the reviewing engineers and representatives that some of those concerns are better left for site plan approval to be addressed. In the interest of time, I just wanted to touch briefly on some of the major comments and concerns that were not addressed at the February 27th meeting. One of the main concerns was fire access. Because our building is over 30 feet, it requires aerial access, and because of that aerial access, it requires a 26-foot wide, this is New York State standards and also Town of Eastchester standards, a 26-wide driveway to accommodate the outriggers of the fire trucks. And also, we updated our pavement detail per Mr. Tom Pintavale's comments, just to ensure that the fire truck, the asphalt could accommodate the heavy weight of the biggest truck that the town has. As you, as many of you know, Ray Place is a, you know, it's a relatively steep roadway, so, we wanted to, originally, we wanted to have the fire access running along Ray Place in the front of the building, but just because of the steep slope, it was, just wasn't feasible. So, we moved it to the southern driveway, as Anthony was showing before. In a letter from Tom Pintavale, received by the town and by JMC last month, amongst the asphalt comment, and there was another comment about landscaping, just making sure that we didn't propose any landscaping in the area of the fire driveway that would impede any such part of the truck or any, you know, fireman getting in and out of the truck, and we've addressed that. We're not proposing any landscaping that will grow in that area, and we feel that all comments have been addressed in regards to fire access. Traffic was also concerned. Again, Ray Place, the significant pitch, about 16 to 17%, as Ed has designed the building, it's best accommodates this grade change, hence having the two driveways. I know this will need final sign-off from the highway superintendent, but we feel the two driveways are necessary just because of the steep grade change. I think between the two driveways, it's about 10 feet of grade change. And we also ensured that the northernmost driveway is offset from the enclave's access, ingress, and egress point, just to limit any traffic conflicts between the two buildings. As shown in our traffic report, the trips produced by our 21-unit building are relatively small. We used Transportation Engineers' Trip Generation Manual, it's a well-recognized, well-known publication just to estimate the number of trips produced from our development. The total trips during the week, during peak AM and peak PM hours are about 17, and that's, you know, combined from 7:00 to 9:00 in AM, which is the peak, and the PM, which is 4:00 to 6:00. So, that's a total of 17 trips throughout the day, which we feel is minimal. Another traffic concern was the site distance lines. Coming down Ray Place, looking left onto Brook Street, and while you're making it right, there are on-street parking that hinder the site distance. Right now, we calculated at about 85 feet, and I think the required is about 190 feet. To get that adequate site distance, we would need to remove three of those spaces, three of the closest places, spaces to Ray Place. This would obviously provide adequate site distance, and since Brook Street is a county road, we feel this is a conversation to be had between the town and the county, and we would be more than happy, we provide the traffic report to the county, just to help in any way we can. That's pretty much it for traffic. We feel all traffic comments have been addressed. Some stormwater management comments, since our site is under, the total site area and total proposed disturbance is under one acre, we are under the New York State threshold for a full stormwater pollution prevention plan, but we did put a stormwater report together just to outline how we plan to mitigate the stormwater issues and just the increase in impervious area. And, you know, I say increase in impervious area, as you know, the majority of the site is impervious, it's two parking lots, but Town of Eastchester requirements require us to design our system as if the site was previously undeveloped and completely pervious. And there was one, one problem that we ran into with stormwater, was there's currently an existing stormwater water management system in the upper parking lot. We don't know how old it is, we're not sure how it was designed, what it was designed for, and it was taking in water from off-site, from the, what is, will be the DeChico's parking lot. So, after sitting down a couple times with the towns consulting engineer, Mr. Joe Tramelli, we feel we've come up with a good solution to properly mitigate all increase in runoff flows. And that was really it for the stormwater, we feel that all stormwater comments have been addressed. And just real quick on utilities on water and sanitary, we are, the project will require a 200-liter-foot water main extension that would connect into the six-foot main running along Brook Street. We are in the process of finalizing the design with Suez Water. We had a meeting with Suez late in 2019 in the winter, and they assured us that there is adequate capacity to accommodate the site. The project would also require 100, approximately 190 linear feet sewer main, which would connect into the 12, existing 12-inch main running along Brook Street. As, at town requirements, they have an I&amp;I program and an infiltration, inflow and infiltration program, which will require us to mitigate three-on-one for every increase in gallons per day. We'd have to do three times that to properly mitigate the increase in flows, and we've also sat down with Mr. Joe Tramelli to, and Rocco Latella, just to kind of finalize, not finalize, but kind of hammer out a feasible solution to mitigate the sanitary sewer flows. What we have agreed to is video a specified amount of linear pipes in the adjacent neighborhoods, and after we video those, the purpose of videoing would be to find any illegal connections, just to see the condition of pipes, so we can identify if there are any legal connections, the condition of the pipes, and we would then, after videoing, kind of figure out an exact amount of pipe to either, you know, re-line, purge, or repair pipes that are in bad condition. We've also agreed to resurface the entirety of Ray Place, because we are, like I just talked about, the utility connections, we are cutting up a significant amount of Ray Place, and we just felt it necessary to resurface the entirety of Ray Place, and also replace the curbs, which are not in the best condition, all along Ray Place on our side of the site. And that also includes a walkway going down from the site, connecting into the sidewalk on Brook Street, and as part of that, one of the comments from the consulting engineer was to ensure that both ramps on the side of Ray Place, at the Ray Place and Brook Street intersection, were ADA accessible, and we designed those, and we also designed ADA-accessible ramps at both entrances to the site, both northern and southern driveways of the site. And that is pretty much it for the site plan stuff, and after we walk through the massing model, I'll be happy to answer any questions. But now, Anthony will take over with the massing model.
Thank you. Chairman, members of the board and staff, my name is Anthony Nestor, the firm of JMC. This evening, I will walk through an animated clip of a massing model that was prepared for this project, as also requested by this board. I will provide some narration as to where we are with regards to road rates and things like that and directions, and I ask that you let the animation play through in its entirety at first, and if you would like to go back, we can do so after. I'd also like to note that the revised building colors that Mr. Vogel mentioned earlier are represented in this animation, and lastly, that, just note that most of the data that was created, was used to create this model, was taken from current Westchester GIS data, since we did cover... was taken from current Westchester GIS data, since we did cover a pretty vast area in this section of town. And you may notice some uneven areas throughout the animation. I just wanted to let everybody know that. So I'm going to toggle over my screen. So can everybody see the revised screen? So what I'd like to do here is, five Ray Place site is located centrally in the screen here. If everybody can see my cursor, it's located right here. And we'd like to start at this location. One, just to give a sense of where we are with location of Brook Street, Pike Plains Road, or Route 22, Ray Place, the enclave, the single-family residence to the west, which Mr. Vogel mentioned earlier. But what's important, what we'd like to emphasize here too, is the large wooded buffer that exists currently today between the residences in the single-family area to the west, through the shopping center, and also to our project. So I'm just going to run this animation. So we're going to start at this elevation and continue north on Ray Place. And then we're ultimately going to wind up, I'm going to call it eye level, so around six feet in height, which the rest of the animation will be taken. You can see that the buildings that we've incorporated into the model, which were all taken from LiDAR data from the county GIS system was utilized. So now we're going to get down on Brook Street at eye level, and we're going to come up to the approach of Ray Place, to the right or to the south. So we're going to make that right up Ray Place, as if you were traveling south on Ray Place. The enclave is on your right there, and our new building is on the left. So we're going to, we're going to come up to the top of the, to the knoll here, which is at our southern entrance drive. And then we're just going to back out down south into the parking lot more, so as if you're coming from the shopping center, north on Ray Place, give you a sense of the trees and the cover that's provided. So now we're going to travel down Ray Place in the northbound direction. I'm going to come up to Brook Street, and we're going to go east. And we're trying to keep an eye on the building too, as we're going through this. So now we're traveling east on Brook Street up to the intersection of Route 22. And then once we get to this intersection, Route 22, we're going to travel in the south At this point, we're going to turn around and go on a northbound lane, go northbound. We're going to go north past Brook Street, and then turn around back up and south on. And that is the clip that we have tonight. So I would think that that concludes our presentation. And if there's any questions for either Mr. Vogel, Mr. Vogelander, or myself.
Okay, thank you. Standby for a minute. Do we want to see the clip again, guys, or we're good?
I think it was very helpful.
Do you want to run through it again, or?
I could do it once without talking at all and let you guys just watch it.
Yeah, yeah, that would be great. I'd like to see it again.
It's only two minutes long, so.
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile. It's well done, and I think it helps us quite a bit.
I think in particular, when you go up Ray Place, that is a pretty accurate sense of the slope. I've driven up that.
If you guys want to stop at any point, just give me the word.
Sure, thank you. Can you stop it there? Yeah, stop it there. Just back it up a little. You can't back, yeah.
I can back it up, just so you know. I mean, I can't manipulate the camera angle.
That's fine.
But I can stop it forward.
Okay. Thank you. It's very well done. Certainly gives a size, idea of the massing and the size of the building. So if you guys, I think what we're going to do now is we're going to ask Mr. Tramelli to come up and address the site plan issues that you guys went over, because he's reviewed the memos. So can we somehow pass to him?
Sure, you could hear me, right?
Yes, I can.
Yes.
Yeah, as was mentioned, from an engineering standpoint, JMC did resolve or address a number of the smaller technical issues that we had, or not issues, the comments that we had regarding the site with regard to grading and drainage and the various retaining walls and such. We did meet with Highway, and they had addressed a number of their comments with regard to improvements within the right-of-way of Ray Place related to sidewalks and curb and some drainage improvements. So I think the majority of our prior comments have either been completely resolved at this point, or are somewhat minor, able to be dealt with. With regard to the stormwater, there was a preliminary stormwater report provided. And I think certainly for the purposes of SEACRA, I think we're at a point where we can agree that the site can be mitigated from a stormwater standpoint. There's still some details that I think will need to be worked out. We have, as I said, the report was preliminary, so there are still a, there's supporting documents, figures, and calculations that need to be provided. But I think as a whole, the site will be able to be mitigated from a stormwater standpoint. For us, I think the largest unknown at this point is related to the sanitary sewer mitigation. Obviously, as was mentioned, they'll need approval from the Health Department for extensions to the water and sanitary sewer mains. But with regard to the INI and the concerns related to overall capacity of the system, we had discussed at a staff level with John Myers, some alternatives for them to consider in an effort to mitigate INI and deal with the capacity concerns for the existing system. And that included televised inspections of the surrounding of certain water main, sorry, certain sanitary mains within the sewer shed that this project is located in, trying to identify some problem areas that could be repaired to reduce the inflow and infiltration to the existing system. We had also discussed, and it was an idea actually brought up by the applicant, it means to store sanitary waste on-site and then discharge it into the system during off-peak hours. I don't know if that's, that concept has been furthered by the applicant. And then finally, we discussed, I think it was mentioned or discussed at the last meeting, the potential to revisit the MTA crossing for the overflow bypass, which I think would resolve a lot of problems and concerns that the town had. So I'd like to hear more on that particular component of the project. And I'm wondering if any conversations with the MTA had been had. If so, what the, you know, what the response is, and if they've given any further thought to the on-site storage for the off-peak discharge. That would certainly help with the capacity concerns that the Highway Department had. But the sanitary is really, I think, the, from an engineering side, is the one remaining item that could use a little attention at this point.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Tramelli. Were you done with everything? I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you have any specific questions.
Yeah, so let me, so now is the opportunity for the board to address questions to Mr. Tramelli about site issues, or what he just said, or to the applicant about any of the issues that we saw about massing, or any other questions forward. So I'll start with one question, since, well, it's fresh in my memory, if you don't mind, guys. And it's addressed to Mr. Tramelli. And I guess there's, as you said, there's three separate issues to, or three separate means with which to address the sanitary sewer issues. And one was site, the other was MTA, and the other was the INI. So just so I understand, if you do the, if you investigate existing mains, would you start with the one on Brook Street, and that's, that would be the one most affected?
I don't, I don't know that we would need to start with Brook Street. I don't, I don't know that historically there's been issues with that main, and we could confirm that with the Highway Department. But what we had recommended was, you know, all the neighborhood to the north, and there's portions of the residential properties on the east side of Route 22, that all contribute to the same sanitary sewer shed that ultimately end up flowing down Brook Street and underneath the tracks at Harney Road. So really, any, if there are any problem areas in that entire system, eliminating infiltration from any part of that would help offset the design load from this project. So if you envision this as a large bucket, they're going to be adding to that bucket. And if we could help, you know, eliminate some of the leaks from other sanitary mains in that system, that'll offset the impact from this project. So I don't necessarily think it has to be immediate invasion to the property, but somewhere in this.
Joe, I have a follow-up question on, because you mentioned the MTA and potential discussions with the MTA. What, and you just mentioned Harney Road, and could you explain that issue with the MTA again, with, this is Metro North and the tracks, which are at the bottom of Brook Street when it becomes Harney Road?
Yeah, if, I don't know all the details of it. I wasn't involved in that project that this originally came up with, came up in. But from what I understand, there's the ability to provide on Scarsell Avenue, a bypass, an overflow bypass beneath the MTA right-of-way, that would relieve the sanitary main that flows through Harney. That's the main line. But if that becomes overwhelmed and surcharged, the surrounding area starts to back up and realize issues with sanitary capacity. So there was the ability, had the MTA approved it, to provide a bypass for overflow. And that would have alleviated a lot of the concerns with INI and overall capacity, even during dry weather conditions. So I think if that, that would probably be the Cadillac, whether the Mercedes, fix for the problem. I don't know how easy it's going to be to achieve with the MTA. I know, again, from what I understand, their position in the past was very hands-off. They didn't want to deal with it. They didn't want to permit it. But times have changed, and time has passed. There may be a new line of thinking. So we felt it was worth asking the question again, and maybe try to pursue that angle.
So, Mr. Tramelli, I think when you were talking, you had a question that seemed to be addressed to JMC, and that is an update on the site storage design. I imagine that would be a good time to address that to the applicant, to see if they've made any progress on that.
Sure. This is Anthony.
And the other question was about the MTA, whether you'd had discussions with the MTA.
Sure.
Okay.
This is Anthony again from JMC, just to give you an update on the alternatives for the sewer. We have had conversations with the Westchester County Department of Health with regards to providing some type of holding system on the property. And it was something that they were not accustomed to, so it would be, you know, brand new to them. None of the requirements that they have would apply to any kind of this provision of providing some kind of storage on-site within this sewer district. So we felt that at that time, it was more prevalent to provide more substantial INI infiltration recommendations or fixes, rather than to proceed something that wasn't guaranteed by the Health Department. And with regards to the MTA, we have not contacted them at this moment, but we did pull out all the information of what we did submit to them in the past. And we will reach out to them as requested.
So can you reach the design flows, or whatever it is you're trying to do, without the site storage, or is it something that also needed to be done at the same time?
I believe, Joe, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, what Mr. Tramelli had mentioned before is, as part of the mitigation, we would video a certain section of the existing system to determine where there are locations of infill, infiltration coming in from, it's from the street drainage, or from illicit connections, or manholes, which are in disrepair, and just identify areas where they could be repaired, so limit the amount of runoff or, you know, stormwater runoff entering into the system, which is overtaxing.
Right. So if you, if you fix enough spots, you
Correct.
decrease the capacity. Okay, thank you. All right. This is back to the board. Any more questions for Mr. Tramelli?
I have a question. Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Tramelli, and that is, I understand the concept, the INI concept. You're identifying areas where there is, there is infiltration, and that can be patched up, if you will, so that, so that the system is not taxed as much. And I think apropos to the chairman's comment, if you do enough of that, you've negated the effect of the increased sanitary sewage that you're adding by, by the, you know, That that you're adding by by the, you know, the the building. Does that, does that work in in real life? I mean, it sounds like a great concept. Who who's paying for the repairs of the the? Who's paying for to repair the disrepair, the the areas of infiltration that are identified? Is that something that realistically, A, that the town, or if it's the town, or or whoever is paying for it is going to have the budget to do? Or or is this something where it's, you know, it's basically, we've identified this, that, and the other thing? Okay, you've 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 checked off that box. We're good. How how does it work in practice?
So the short answer is is yes. If mathematically you can figure out an I N I. Rate, right, and offset that nor eliminate that. From a number standpoint, the. Adding can be negated by correcting the I N I. And and that can be done. Typically, what's done is there, you would do flow monitoring during dry weather in select areas. And that would, you know, your, that would give you your base flows. And then you do that same study during wet weather periods. And where you see your spikes are typically where you're going to have your your I N I issues. And it helps you target the the trouble areas and gives you a sense of the flows that you'd be eliminating from the system from an I N I standpoint. As far as who does it, how it gets done, who pays for it, there's a varied ways to deal with that. Typically, what I've seen and and what we've had to do on projects ourselves is that onus is on the applicant. They want to develop the property, the the impacts that they need to mitigate. It's just as they would with stormwater or anything else would be on them. So, you know, we would. Obviously assist them in the study area and and help to find that and and develop the parameters and agree on the repair areas and methods. But the actual completion of those repairs is typically on the applicant.
Okay, because that's what I'd want to really see here. I'd want to see that follow-through so that the actual impact is. At the end of the day, preferably a negative impact, that that it's better than it was before, that that the system is more able to handle. It's able to handle a greater capacity because the the net effect of the repairs outweighs the the introduction of of of. That's that's coming from the building. That's that to me, because and and the reason. That I believe we're spending as much time as we are on this is because this sanitary sewage, sanitary water system. Seems to be one of the bigger problems with this, or bigger issues, I should say, with this proposed development.
Right, and certainly seems to be a big problem in this immediate area. And and just so I'm clear, the. The mitigation that they would propose would would simply offset their development. It certainly wouldn't. Be intended to correct all the problems that may. But it certainly would take it to a level where their project would further it.
But was there some reference to a three-to-one ratio?
There is, so. You know, that that helps not only offsets the project, but it does give a benefit to the community.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's important.
Thank you. Any more questions of the applicant? About the massing, I mean, so I I do have a question because, and it's not about site plan, it's about the massing. There was a, I don't know what rendering or what view you guys showed. It was, yeah, it was that one. If you could back it up to the point. Where we're standing in this C V S parking lot looking up at the building. Yeah, keep going. Yeah, that right there. So is there a landscape plan or anything? I like the trees in the near part, but I'm looking, is there landscaping? Is there landscaping there or that's, there can't be because that's parking up there?
Correct. All this landscaping that's here is the existing landscaping that's between the parking lots that are currently there today. And the parking lot below. Unfortunately, most of the landscaping that we're providing onsite happens. In these little pocket areas that are behind and in long gray place. So it it's very difficult to see. I believe we've used trees here, this one, this one, and here, and there's another one back here. Which are actually the trees which would fit in the islands within the parking areas outside the building.
Okay, so they are there, but they're small because the parking area is confined.
Is there, excuse me, is there a buffer along the inside of that? That retaining wall, a buffer between the retaining wall and the pavement? You can go back to the site plan or the landscape plan.
So here's the pairs, the, well, actually, which is not shown on this because this is, this is the lower parking lot. If you can see my cursor. There is another wall which is not shown on here because this is all G I S data. There is another existing wall that runs along here which you see from Route twenty-two. So here's the property line and then here's. The the southern existing wall that goes down this way. And then there's the other one that picks up here. So whatever vegetation is within this area and it widens as you go south. Is to remain and we're not disturbing any of it. And then the pockets, this is an existing tree on the north end. Maintaining and then the small pocket of landscaping here in the upper tier of the parking lot. Which is covered by the existing canopy of the trees here is provided in the back. So we're relying on the existing buffer between the the lower parking lot and. Lower level of parking. Active as a buffer.
And Anthony? Along those lines, unfortunately, I think Jay's going to have to look at that again with regard to if you meet perimeter landscaping requirements. Just a note.
That's all existing, though, you said, the buffer that's there? So that wall is existing and any landscaping that's there, as you just said.
I'll see if I can title back.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you. Oh, there was another question. If you go around to Brook, the view at Brook, looking up Ray. Yeah, could you back it up to there? That, whose wall is that? That's C V S's wall, right?
This one right here? Yes, that's C V S.
So are there sidewalk improvements or part of this?
I believe we are adding a new sidewalk along our frontage all the way down to Brook Street. And as recommended by the traffic consultant, we are also improving drop curbs ramps at both. East and west sides of the intersection.
Those ADA accessible.
I see that. Other questions, guys?
Questions here.
So Jim, are you going to move on to Phil Greeley?
Yeah, that's what I wanted. Yes, I am. I was just thinking if there's anything on anyone's mind. We'll have an opportunity to continue asking questions of the architect. After we hear from Mr. Greeley. So that's your cue, Mr. Greeley.
Good evening. It is the chairman and the members of the board, Philip Greeley, Mazer Consulting. I think Mr. Bolander gave a good synopsis of some of the items that we've been dealing with. Just historically, we had prepared our first series of comments back in December of two thousand nineteen. They responded with information, including a traffic study which we reviewed, commented on. And they, we we covered that in our February twenty-seventh letter. Subsequently, they updated the traffic study to deal with some outstanding issues. And we reviewed and commented on that in our April second memo. So that brings us forward to our most recent memo, which is May twenty-first of this year. And I'd like to say, you know, the applicant, J M C and Mr. Bolander has gone through and been very responsive to our comments. As outlined in our May twenty-first letter. Many of these, we are just recommending that they be kept as, you know, conditions of site plan approval. And we'll work together with Margaret to make sure that those get carried forward. And, you know, they include such things as the sidewalk treatments and the resurfacing limits. They do show on their plan those limits, but, you know, just some of the details relative to that. And in in terms of their traffic study, just to kind of give a real quick synopsis. Because there were some comments from the public at the February meeting. They they provided information on existing traffic conditions, the trip generation that Mr. Bolander quoted. You know, in terms of a one-hour peak period, you're looking at approximately seventeen or so vehicle trips that are generated. So it's not a huge number of trips. However. In the, one of the other comments that we had requested. Since the supermarket was unoccupied at the time of their traffic counts in their traffic study. They needed to include traffic for the reoccupancy of the supermarket, which they did. That was updated. We had some differences in in terms of the distributions or the amount of that traffic that we thought might use Ray Place. They provided an update in their most recent traffic study to show what that effect would be if it was, you know, somewhat higher. And again, these are working with standard projections and then pretty typical for any of the the supermarket category. Which would include the reoccupancy, which is planned with the Chicos. So so they've addressed all of those items. They've taken into account background growth, other development projects. The the reoccupancy of that space and what traffic would be generated for that. And as I said, most of the items that we've highlighted here are site plan approval type conditions. Of of making sure things get done and get carried over with the Highway Department, et cetera. They addressed the site distance and the need for their two driveways out to Ray Place. They added the sidewalk. There is one small section of sidewalk at the south end of the property. Approaching the shopping center. That is not a part of this application. But it it's, it's it's somewhat of a missing link. And the applicant has agreed to coordinate with the Highway Department. And with the adjacent shopping center to to get that moved forward and and get that accomplished. So we we think that's important in terms of some of the public comments. Giving pedestrian access from anyone from this complex or or anyone coming from Brook Street. Access to the shopping center area. So that last remaining piece of white. That you see on the site plan that's on the screen, just south of their property line is the area we're talking about. So the applicant has agreed to work together with the town and the adjoining shopping center to to deal with that. And also deal with some of the striping and signing as you enter into the shopping center. Again, it's not their property there, so they don't control it, but they've agreed to continue to work with those items. So in 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 general, you know, their traffic study has addressed all of the issues. There are two items that I'd like to comment on that I think are important for the board to to understand. And are key to the project in terms of. Site distance at Ray Place and Brook Street. As Mr. Bolander indicated in his presentation. The current site distance exiting from Ray Place, looking to the left down Brook Street is restricted. Due to on-street parking. And in order to improve that to meet current standards. There would have to be a removal of three parking spaces. Now, that involves two things. Because Brook Street is a county road. I don't know, I haven't seen any correspondence, but we don't know if there's been any correspondence between the applicant's engineer. And Westchester County Department of, D P W, Department of Transportation. There was some correspondence received from the Westchester County Planning Department, which the applicant has addressed. But we would like to know if there's been any correspondence or any weighing in from the county. On their position relative to potential removing of parking spaces. And for that matter, the improvements to the sidewalk that would be within the county right-of-way. And again, this this would be something that would be a condition of a site plan approval, but but it's important in terms of. The existing conditions at this intersection. The last component of that is that. The removal of the parking spaces in this particular instance would also involve the town board, I believe. Because those are metered parking spaces. So I don't know if there's been any discussion with the town board about that. Again, this is an existing condition. The applicant has identified the the shortfall of existing sightlines. They've identified what would need to be done to fully improve that. And but I don't know if there's been any input or feedback from either of those. And then the last item that I have, and again, in the applicant's most recent response. Which was their May fifteenth response relative to this parking issue. They just indicate that the applicant will continue to pursue the removal of the three on-street parking spaces to improve the site distance. So we want some input on that. And the last item, there was a question by a member of the public. Relative to the potential need for a traffic signal at the intersection of Ray Place and Brook Street. Now, the applicant has done a capacity analysis which demonstrates what their impact. In in terms of increase in delay, which would be pretty minimal from their traffic. And they have, in their May fifteenth response, agreed to provide a. Traffic signal warrant analysis, which is a separate analysis that just reviews whether or not a signal. Would even be warranted at that intersection. Now, based on their their capacity analysis. I don't think it will be warranted, but they they have agreed that they will provide a warrant analysis. But that hasn't been been completed yet. So whether or not that is put off till site plan approval. Or that's something, you know, in response to the concern or comment from the public. I I think tho- those are the only really two items that that are somewhat outstanding at this point in time. And maybe the applicant could respond if they've had any discussions with the county on the intersection. And if they've had any discussions with the town board relative to parking removal. And I think that's pretty much it.
Right, thank you, Mr. Greeley. So it's about the site distance and the warrant study. Who does the signal warrants? The applicant does it, right? And we review it or?
Yes, the applicant would 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 do that and they've agreed to do that. They, in their response of May fifteenth, they indicated that they would provide that. We just haven't seen it yet. Again, I I I, based on the volumes and and the analysis, the capacity analysis that they did. I don't believe that it will satisfy the warrants for a signal, but they do have to provide that to us so we can. Can clearly sign off. And and again, because this is a county road, the input from the the county would be useful also.
Okay, got it. Thank you, Mr. Greeley. Anything else or?
That's it.
Great, so.
Everything else we have listed there is our items that that would be dealt with as conditions of site plan approval. So I don't think there's any heavy items there. Margaret would roll those into any site plan approval conditions.
Sure. So this goes back to the applicant. Can you give the board and Mr. Greeley an update on both of those?
Again, this is Anthony from J M C. Just to echo some of Mr. Greeley's comments with regards to the warrant analysis. Dealing with the county and or the town board with regards to the removal of those potential parking spaces. We feel that that's kind of like a site plan plan issue. It's not that we do not want to provide that, but we were just trying to, you know. Get further and and hopefully get before the Z B A. Prior to doing any more investigation with regards to pursuing those improvements out on Brook Street. Because we feel based on the minimal amount of traffic being generated with regards to the warrant analysis. We concur with Mr. Greeley that you don't believe that it will meet those warrants. And, you know, you feel that there would, it's a site plan issue with regard. And, you know, we feel that it's a site plan issue with regards to the warrant analysis. And in regards to the removal of the parking spaces, I think it's going to be, I think it's a collaborative effort between the town staff, the applicant, and to go through the process of whether those spaces need to be removed or not. So I don't know involving the town board at this time.
Yeah, okay. That's sure. All right. We, I guess the board has to decide if we agree with you or if we think they're more important, if they need to be resolved. So obviously, we'll get to that. We think that there's a few issues. There are secret issues that we have to resolve before we move forward.
I think with the sightlines and the warrant, I think the far bigger issue, quite frankly, again, assuming that people go back to stores after this whole pandemic is over, is the DeChico and Sons. I've been at a couple of their locations in Westchester County, and they are, the parking is just packed to the gills. People, you know, for a supermarket, it really draws people. And once that opens up, and again, assuming people still go to supermarkets like they used to, that is going to result in problems at that location with or without the applications, the applicant's development. Obviously, we have the opportunity, while we have the applicant before us, to address these issues, and that's why we're doing so. But I want to remind everyone, as I'm sure the applicant already has, and Mr. Greeley even mentioned that this is a pre-existing problem, not caused by this application. And the amount of increase in the traffic caused by this development would be fairly minimal. And I would think, without any scientific evidence, that it would be dwarfed by the amount of traffic that would be generated by DeChico and Sons, once it's up and running and at full capacity. So just wanted to comment.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board, guys? Because this is a public hearing. We're going to open to public comments if we don't have any more at this point.
No comment here.
Good. All right. So let's try the public hearing part of this meeting.
Well, again, Mr. Chairman, just to make an announcement to the public. If you are present and wish to offer a comment or make a question from the public, please raise your hand. In the instruction packet, there is instructions on how to do it from a phone. And also, if you are on a computer, raise your hand, and I will acknowledge them and unmute you one at a time. When you get on, please identify yourself by stating your name and address, and then offering your comment. Okay? Now, Mr. Chairman, I'm scrolling through the list of attendees, and I don't see anyone raising their hands. But I'd like to give it a little bit of time, because this is a new format, and we just want to make sure we give people an opportunity. I do see a hand going up. I believe it's Mr. Sweeney. I'm going to ask you to unmute, and then you can unmute yourself and identify yourself and make your comment.
You ready?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. It's Frank Sweeney, twenty-two Lakeview Avenue. My questions are threefold. First, I'd like to congratulate the architecture and the presentation that you've given us. The video was excellent. It was well documented and well presented, and I think it speaks a lot to the professionalism of putting the project together, first of all. I have three items that I'd like to raise, and they're not new. They were really raised, I think, back in February, but I'll just highlight them for you. One is the variances required by the fire department. The second is the sewage issue, which is well-known. The third is the traffic issue that basically are we going to allow the folks from this development to both exit onto Ray Place going to Brook or actually going through the Seaco parking lot and coming out on Route twenty-two? One of the things that the developer really needs to consider is that CVS has a forty-foot container that backs up along Ray Place, that kind of delivers materials pretty much throughout the night to CVS. I think that's something that you may want to take a look at. And the other is, does the Seaco buy into the strategy that the residents would be using their bypass to get out to Route twenty-two as an alternative to using Brook Street?
Okay. Noted. The Eastchester Fire Department, the sewage. I think the sewage has been addressed. Well, actually, we will take all these into consideration, Mr. Sweeney.
Well, the area that the sewage is, I understand that it has to obviously come down to Brook Street. The only thing is, is that our concern is, particularly in the north end of town, is the bypass to get to the Yonkers Sewer System comes through Scarsdale Avenue to the corner of Woodruff and Scarsdale. There is a trough there that allows us to go underneath the railroad tracks. But unless you have MTA authority or them to buy into the strategy of the project, I'm not so convinced that we're far enough along on the sewer issue that it wouldn't become a long-term standing issue in terms of getting that approved by the MTA.
Right. Mr. Sweeney, were you part of the, were you at the meeting where Mr. Tramelli spoke about the alternatives?
Yes, I was.
Right. So my understanding, I'm pretty sure it was accurate, is he could be used as a professional that there are also ways to mitigate, if not make negative, the increase in sewage due to this, such that the MTA condition you brought up won't need to be considered.
I think Mr. Tramelli described the MTA situation. I believe he said that was the Cadillac or the Mercedes, that if you could get buy-in from the MTA, that would be a major accomplishment and would help the entire sewage system on the north end. But if that were not able to be done, that the alternative, which should still have a net positive effect on the sewage system, is this I and I methodology where you're identifying weak spots in the system, fixing those. And the ratio that I specifically asked Mr. Tramelli about, the three-to-one ratio, is designed so that you were repairing more than, the net effect of the repairs that you're making should be to improve the system three times as much as you are adding. Now, you know, I don't know if that works each and every time. I doubt it. But as long as the net effect is zero or even a positive effect, there's, with the repairs that are identified and made, you're actually ending up better off than you are with doing nothing. And that's, I believe, what Mr. Tramelli was telling us. And so there are a few different ways of skinning this cat. I think that's what the chairman was referring to.
Okay, I would agree with that. The only thing is, is that the route of the sewage line is going to come down the entire length of Brook Street into Scarsdale Avenue. That was my question, because the trough that is required to get into the Yonkers Sewer System happens to be at the corner of Woodruff and Scarsdale Avenue. We know that for a fact.
So I think we're getting discussion here as to the design of the sewage system on Brook Street, which is not what we're looking.
Well, just a flow, just a flow. I'm not asking for the detail. If they're coming all the way down to Brook Street.
We're not changing anything there. Right? We are not adding any addition into that. What we're doing is, what's going into Brook Street from this development is no different than what's there now. I think that's what the engineers are coming up with. So although I'd like to answer your question, I don't really think it's part of this application.
How would you make a recommendation for the project if you don't know the ultimate solution to the, one of the key issues is the sewer, sewage?
And it's being addressed by the applicant. To our satisfaction, we wanted to prove it. So I understand your concern. I understand what you're talking about at down and down at the MTA bypass. But right now, we're, you know, we're dealing with the information that's put in front of us by the applicant, which says it's not really changing. So thank you for your comments, and we will continue.
Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the board?
So Jim, I think you'll need to decide if you are going to request that the applicant come back next month with some additional information with regard to sanitary sewer, whether you think that's necessary before you adopt a negative declaration and refer them to the zoning board, or if you think you have enough information to refer them to the zoning board, then you would close the public hearing here. You'll keep it open, because it'll come back. Forget about closing the public hearing.
I was actually waiting to see if Robert had anyone else from the public.
It does not appear, I'm scrolling up and down, that there are any other hands raised or any other comments requested by the public.
Okay. That being said, we'll get to what Margaret just said. And I think my opinion is that there is some information that we need before we could move forward with this. And plus, we need time to sort of wrap things up. But I think there's some issues that we would like to be resolved or have a little more clarity or resolution on before we can do, move forward to adopt a neg deck on this. In particular, as you said, we'd like to understand the sewage issue more completely, and that's being addressed. We'd like to understand the warrant study at the intersection and also what's going to be done with the parking spaces. I mean, I think, I think everything else has been, oh, and visual impacts, guys. Obviously, none of us have said anything, so I guess we're giving it the okay as far as the visual. I seem to think, and that seems to be one of the largest issues, I think it's large, but I think, given the area it's at, and that it's not directly in a residential area, I don't think it has much of an impact, so I'm not going to make very many comments or requirements about the aesthetics of it. And if we all agree to that, then the issues I put forth in the first part of my long sentence are the ones that need to be addressed before they come back.
I'm comfortable with the massing as well. And I do have some concerns as to what can be done with respect to the traffic without the buy-in of the county. But it still is an issue, and perhaps even if the answer is, we can't get the county to buy in, particularly in this disjointed time we're living in, maybe that's, we need to hear that. But there are some outstanding issues, as you pointed out.
So that being said, we're anticipating that some of these are addressed between now and the next meeting, at which time, if everything's addressed adequately to our understanding, I think we'll be in a much better position to move this forward. We'd like to thank everything you guys put together. It's a great presentation. You helped us get through the first one, and I think it went very well. Thank you for the great presentations and the preparation and all of your comments and answers. And we're hoping to get this moving forward.
Jim, you'll need to, in the October meeting, you declared your intent to be lead agency, but you'll need now to make a motion to declare yourselves lead agency so that then you'll be in a position to adopt a negative or positive declaration at the next meeting.
Oh, you've got it here. Thank you. I've got my cheat notes here. So then, based on that, I'm going to preemptive vote on this, guys. So I'm going to have to make a motion to declare the planning board lead agency for the secret review of application nineteen dash forty-two five Ray Place. On my favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, we're keeping the public hearing open. Sorry, I confused everyone.
All right. Next. Next application is application nineteen dash zero-two, two-four-nine Main Street.
Okay, and I'm setting everyone up here. Hopefully.
Guys, excuse you for one second. We'll be right back.
Okay, we should be getting some additional people on the screen.
Just give me one second. You're in my ear, so I hear you. Okay? I'll just be right back.
And I'm getting a phone call. Let me see. Hello?
Is it Margaret?
Oh, hi, Angelo. Okay, so we should have some of your team up. So hold on one minute. We have Angelo, Antonio. I don't see all of you here. Give me a second here.
I think part of the team is.
They're calling in?
No, I think you still have people from the other applicants still in there.
No, I think I've left.
Mr. Vogel is still on.
Oh, Ed, can you sign out, please?
Sure.
Sorry about that.
Here we go.
Let's see. Here we go. Give me one minute. I thought I got everyone here. Okay, so we have Angelo, Antonia. Okay, Antonio. Carlito.
And Dave Smith with that.
Oh, okay. I forgot about Dave. And Thomas. And some of you will need to adjust your own settings to unmute yourselves or to put the video on. Okay.
Good evening.
Here we go. Is everybody up on your team now?
I think Mike's there.
Tommy's there, but he said he's having problems that keeps disconnecting him.
Who is that?
Tommy Cohaney.
Okay, let me see. I have him on my list.
I see Michael on.
Hey, Dave.
Hey, guys. All right. Thanks for joining in.
Okay, hold on.
Margaret, do you have Carlito Holt?
Yes. Panelist, Carlito. Now, who are you missing? I have Thomas. I just don't have a video for Thomas.
I don't see Michael Stein.
I'm here.
There he is. Okay. It's kind of like Hollywood Squares.
I know. So are you missing anyone? Is that everybody?
I think we're good.
Well, Tommy's not connected. I'm not sure why.
All right, let me see if I could. I did, I had him a minute ago. Yeah, he's gone. He's not on my list. He'll need to.
Thomas, I see him shown on the screen, just the name.
He doesn't have video on. So he should, Thomas, can you hear us?
I'm texting with him right now.
Yeah, I've done everything I can for him.
We can start down and.
I've got five of you guys, right? Is that right? One, Michael, Dave, and Carlito and Tom, who we can't see. Yeah, if you want to start and we can catch up with Tom, or he can catch up with us.
Yeah, so I'm, just so that, you know, I'm showing Thomas as a panelist who can share the screen, but he has no mic and he has no video. So I don't know.
He needs to go to the bottom of his screen and to the left-hand side at the bottom and activate his video and his, his audio.
It's, he's trying to log off completely because it just, it just says, it keeps saying rejoining.
Yeah, so he should do exactly that. Can we, you guys can start, right? Or do we need Tommy, Tom?
I think Dave. Yep. Mr. Chairman, you let me know when you're ready to go.
Okay, yeah. Good to go.
Ready to go?
Yep.
Okay, great. This is the public hearing. Do you want, I forget what your process is. Do you expect to start the public hearing first and then the applicant present or?
No, no. So we're going to, you're going to present and then our, you have sub consultants and we have consultants for the town. They're gonna wrap up or we're gonna talk to Mr. Tramelli. And then after that, we're gonna ask questions of Mr. Tramelli. We, the board, are gonna ask questions if we have any of Mr. Tramelli and/or you. And then I think we, our traffic consultant, Mr. Greeley, might have something to say too. We'll talk to him. We'll ask questions from him and then at the end of all of those back and forth, we'll open to the public hearing.
Great.
Okay, so that's, you guys are up first.
Very good. So thank you very much. Good evening. For the record, my name is Dave Smith, principal with Planning and Development Advisors. We're consultants to Eastchester Manor Developers LLC, which is the applicant. Angelo Agavino is the principal. He's here tonight. We appreciate all the efforts on behalf of the town and your board for making the, this virtual meeting a reality. Given the last time that we met with you was October twenty-fourth of two thousand and nineteen, obviously, things have changed quite a bit in the world since then. So we really appreciate giving the opportunity to present. Just process-wise, since the last time we met in October of two thousand and nineteen, your board issued a negative declaration and you referred this application to the zoning board. And the proposed application includes the redevelopment of the project site located here. We have a site diagram. Here's Main Street. Project is located at two forty-nine Main Street. Here's an aerial view. The project's approximately point three five acres. It's located fronting on Main Street. It's located directly adjacent to the Eastchester Ambulance Corps and the Fire Department Headquarters, which are located just to the east. And then surrounding the, the property are residential, residential homes. And obviously, as you know, Main Street is a commercial corridor leading towards the town center. Projects located in the RAB retail business, which permits multifamily. The, here's a photograph of the existing property. There's an existing vacant, currently vacant two-family residential structure. And essentially, it's in not the best shape. And obviously, that's one of the reasons that Mr. Agavino was looking to make a significant investment in rebuilding the property. So just by way of process, we appeared before the zoning board of appeals in January of two thousand and twenty. As you recall, we had five variances that were requested. Mr. Chairman, it's up to you if you would like me to review the five variances, but the, the notice of denial and the ZPA's approval were included in our April sixth, I think it was our April sixth memo to.
Yeah, that won't be, that won't be necessary. You could just keep.
Very good. Okay, so then on, in February of eleven, two thousand and twenty, the zoning board granted the, the, all five of the variances. And again, that, that decision of record is included with your submission package. And then procedurally, after that, we appeared on March fifth for the Architectural Review Board. They issued a positive recommendation based on the materials, the presentation made before them. We've included their comments and responses to their comments as part of our April sixth, two thousand and twenty submission package to, to your board. And I'll get to their comment shortly. And the and so then, we submitted a package on, in April. It was reviewed by your staff and consult, your consultants. They provided us with comments. We provided, we took the opportunity, given that your board wasn't meeting in April, to provide responses to those comments. Those responses are included in our May twelfth, two thousand and twenty submission to, to your board. And the plans were updated to reflect response to those comments. So very briefly, I'm not going to go through the, the specific floor plans, but I want to focus on kind of the exterior, the elevations. I'll briefly go through the site plan and some of the response to the ARB. And just to start, just, and just to refresh your, your memory, proposed project is a four-story building. And on the screen before you is the illustrious rendering that was prepared and submitted with our, I believe it was with our April or our May submission. There are proposal for fifteen multifamily units. It's market rate rental. Nine one-bedroom units, six two-bedroom units. And then that project is supported by twenty-six parking spaces, fourteen of which are indoor, as shown underneath the building here. And then there are twelve, which are outdoor, located along the exterior of the property. Now here's a site plan drawing. Again, we have Main Street to the left, access, a one-way access in from Main Street, provides access to the site and around the perimeter, the parking area located in the back. And then one-way drive exiting Main Street on the other side of the property. This is just illustration of the parking plan. Again, we've indicated all the parking that's being provided underneath the building. And there were some comments initially by, on the building inspector with respect to handicap accessibility. We were able to accommodate that to meet the code. And so essentially, this provides the, the opportunity to meet all the parking requirements of the code. And then I'm just gonna quickly go, this is the seller plan. This is the ground floor plan, again, with the lobby coming in off of Main Street. And there was, there was a comment from ARB with respect to the door of the building entrance, which we can get to, which has been modified. And again, these are typical floor plans, floors two, three, and then this is the roof plan. So again, here is the illustrious rendering of the proposed project that was prepared after comments raised by the ARB. Chairman, I'm gonna quickly review the comments raised by the ARB. So they had comments, concerns about the, and I should mention that this one team member who is not with us, but who also contributed towards the preparation of the site planning, and that's Susan Jane Show from one twenty, Aspect One Twenty Landscape Architecture. She prepared a landscape architecture plan, which is included in our submission package. But one of the comments that was raised during the ARB was coordination with the Highway Department with regard to plantings along the town right of way. And I think that was also a comment raised by the Fire Department. And because that is within the town's right of way, we'll follow whatever direction the town would like, whether you want us to keep the trees that are there or remove the trees that are within the right of way. And certainly, with respect to any plantings that are proposed on the subject site, we would follow any recommendation relative to fire access. So that, you know, none of the plantings would be an impediment to access in the structure. As you recall, just scroll back to there is this existing stone wall and there's a bedrock, kind of like an outcrop right here. And there was a comment raised about whether that wall and the rock outcrop could be, or the wall could be retained. The rock outcrop essentially is a somewhat of a nuisance in the design standpoint. So the applicant has, Mr. Agavino's, from a design standpoint, going to remove that, that outcrop and relocate a more formal stone wall with landscaping behind it. So that's kind of response to that. With respect to lighting, the Mr. Agavino was working on and the architect was working on specific fixtures. And we understand that, that any lighting plan needs to make sure that there's no light spill off from the subject property. And so we're asking that be considered, the formal final lighting plan be considered a condition of site plan approval. Ensure that the renders and elevation of floor plans are coordinated. We've done that for the most latest submission, including the rendering that you see before you. One of the comments was include a rendering that's been updated, which you have for you. Oh, there was an issue about showing the proposed, a proposed roof mounted equipment. The roof plan, as indicated in sheet two oh three. Again, you know, none of the equipment will be visible from the street. We don't think that's a particular issue from an architectural standpoint. There was a comment about the, the front door being a more residential versus a commercial, less commercial character. And so as you can see, we've modified the front door accordingly. There was a comment about, on the interior, when you come into the lobby, about an alternate location for package deliveries. And essentially, it's Mr. Agavino's position that if deliveries are made, they could be left in the lobby and residents can come down and get them when they need to. There was a recommendation that the horizontal hardy plank shown on the previous rendering of the stair tower be so that's been changed to a hardy plank on the proposed front elevation of the stair tower. Leave that. And Mr. Afraid it can go through that in more detail. That's right through here. And then lastly, provide a detail of the brick veneer as it's applied to the building. And we'll get to here, the graphic elevations that were prepared by Freida Design. This is the front elevation, side elevation. And, and they asked for that detail of the brick veneer. And I note that in the upper right-hand corner, Mr. Afraid it has included that as part of his application. So those are the elevation drawings for all four sides. Here is the landscape plan, again, with the plantings shown along the streetscape. And where we can or where we could, we've accommodated plantings, landscape plantings along the perimeter of the property. And then lastly, these are a series of the engineering drawings. I know the issue of stormwater management has come up. And certainly, either Thomas or Michael Stein, they're available, can go through a stormwater management system, which has been designed to accommodate the proposed project. So other than that, I think we've, you know, in our May submission, we have provided responses to the various consultants to, to the planning board. Mr. Agavino has obviously made a major investment. It's a major investment for him. He would like to see the project move forward, as we all would. And at this point, the project team is available to respond to any specific questions that you may have or from the, your consultants. And thank you for allowing us this presentation.
You're certainly welcome. Thank you for preparing it and for attending today. Is there any other of your team member that want to present anything or on the exterior or we'll just leave it as is?
I just wanted to bring up about, this is Michael Stein with Hudson Engineering. The sanitary sewer monitoring is, is currently underway. And actually, the meters should be, should be coming out within the next few days. But based upon what was observed, when they put the meters in, the flows are relatively minor compared to what the, the size of the pipe. But once those, once we get the results from the flow monitoring, we'll calculate the pipe capacity and do a comparison of what the, what we're putting into, what flows will be discharged in compared to what the pipe already has capacity for.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. So since I barely understand what you just said, I'm gonna ask Mr. Tramelli to come forth and, and comment on site planning issues, including the.
The same thing, so we can understand it less, right?
Maybe you can translate that for me.
So as indicated in the cover letter and as was just presented, a number of our prior comments have either been fully addressed or at the point now where I think we'd be comfortable just having them as conditions of the resolution. Some of the, I guess, the more significant, for lack of a better word, items, and as noted in, in the cover letter from the applicant, yet to be dealt with, as they just noted. The site lighting plan has to be developed yet. We haven't seen anything in that regard. The sanitary sewer study is underway. And as Mr. Stein just mentioned, in our discussions with the Highway Department, I would expect that, as, as was just described, the sewer impacts or the sewer capacity to not be an issue in this area. There have been, from my conversations with Hector and, and Rocco more recently, there have been no known issues in this port, part of town with regard to the sewer. So I don't expect any, any problems in that respect. The stormwater mitigation system, aside from a few minor comments that we had, that I believe have been dealt with, the mitigation is appropriate for the site and they've demonstrated that. The retaining walls and the, you know, the various retaining walls, we commented on a number of times. They're requesting that the details and the further design of those walls be deferred to, you know, prior to a building permit. We'd certainly be comfortable with conditioning that on a site plan approval. But I, I would like to get a better understanding of how those walls are going to be constructed, how they work with the adjacent sites, the, the ownership limits. If you recall, these walls, they surround three sides of the property and they, they vary or kind of meander from one side of the property line to the other. So it's not entirely clear who owns the walls. And we just want to be sure that what, what they're proposing is something they can either do themselves or have an agreement with those neighboring property owners to amend those walls if needed. So we can certainly work through that during, as conditions of any approval of the board, if the board sees fit. And then finally, I think the, the biggest maybe hurdle or outstanding question at this point is with regard to the fire access. The Fire Department has made it clear that they need access, aerial access at the front of the building for the site. And they can't have those existing overhead wires impede that access. I don't know if the applicants had any conversations with ConEd in that regard about burying those lines. If that's not an option, I think it may require some modifications to the site to accommodate fire access. So Michael, I don't know if you have anything you can share with us in that regard or if that's still pending.
So I'll, I'll take over if you don't mind. So I spoke with Con Edison. I reached out a few times, I guess, because of the virus. I'm, I'm not sure. I actually followed up last week with them. I left a message for the, the management. I, I talked to Energy Services. And there's, they said they're still looking into the matter, what needs to be done. And I mean, it's just paralons. I mean, I wouldn't, I don't, I don't anticipate any problems. You know, you could bury anything. So I just, we're at ConEd's, you know, we're just waiting on them. So as soon as they get back.
So as soon as they get back to us and what the options are, um, on to either just, because I know a guy came out there and he said that, uh, a portion of the feed is not, is not for Eastchester, it's for Tocco. Maybe he could just, uh, take off a piece. Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm not really familiar in that field, but, um, there's definitely gonna be options and that kind of is gonna propose to us. And, and, uh, I'm, I definitely want to, um, do whatever the fire department needs, you know? But I, I would ask that to be a condition of, I guess, a CO or, or something. Because the thing is that I'm at ConEd's, you know, whatever they say I wanna do, I'll, I'll do it. I'll pay whatever it costs to move the lines on, on the ground, up higher, down, whatever.
But as, as, I'm sure you've dealt with before, um, ConEd is, is definitely not the speediest of, uh, responders. And the, the COVID situation has definitely not helped. But without moving it and getting, and having the lines moved where we're meeting the fire, the fire chief's requirements, uh, basically New York State Building Code requirements, we don't have a project. So i- it's a, it's something that we have to have accomplished before we can get a CO.
Right, we understand that. Okay, so it sounds like you're committed to doing whatever it takes to get those lines.
100%.
Can I just ask for clarification? When you say there's alternatives, I'm still confused about the alternatives because I don't know that the board would want the lines to be moved across the street. I mean, other than burying them or moving a pole, a line across the street, what would the other alternatives be?
I'm not, I mean, they haven't got back to us about any alternatives. I'm, I'm not sure if they could just disconnect the wires or if they can get power from a different area to that, those wires and just cut them and put them on the ground or, or move them to a different spot. They haven't gave us any alternative. So I can't tell you that we're, the only alternative is to bury it. Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure what they are.
I think the alternatives are either you're relocating the line, so it's not in front of the building, or you're burying it. And right now, what Angela said, that he doesn't have any.
Yeah, right, right. Someplace else, as in the other side of the street. I don't think we'd accept that either. So it was sort of moving into they need to be buried, which I think you under, agree too.
Yeah.
It's a question of getting them to agree that they could do it or will do it.
I, just the thing is like, I, I don't know what they're gonna say and what they wanna do. So I, I just, I, I, you know, if, if you, I wish I had an answer for you. I'm sorry.
Right, you're dealing with ConEd, so you're gonna have twice as much trouble.
Well, i- is it fair to say that, uh, we, we just did a, uh, the five-ray place, uh, application? And, and, uh, they, they had, they had the ability to, um, put aside a, a certain amount of space that was required by the fire department. I think it was a 26-foot, uh, space, uh, where, where you could have the outriggers. That's not a possibility here, that, 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 uh, if, if I'm hearing everyone correctly, the only alternatives here are to get the, um, those overhead wires either buried or moved to the other side of the street. And if you can't do that, you're not going to be able to meet the fire requirements. Ironically enough, of course, with the fire station right next door to you. I- i- is, is that a fair assessment? That, that, that something has to happen with those wires? That there is no other way to, to make this compliant with fire code?
Yeah, I mean, listen, it would, with short of making the building shorter by four feet to make that requirement, which, I mean, I would rather pay whatever it costs to put the lines on the ground with Con Edison than doing something like that. So, I mean, I guess, you know, that's it.
I think that the board would, in, or in just in speaking, uh, you know, to a couple of board members about this, would prefer that the lines be buried rather than be put across the street. So it seems that a condition of approval could be that they be buried if that's an option that ConEd would allow. I don't know why ConEd would not permit that option. But again, I keep hearing about all these options and I can only think of two. And maybe that's because I don't understand. But the only two options I still understand is burying them or putting them across the street. And if you put them across the street, you have poles on both sides of the road and you're putting, uh, uh, utility lines in front of somebody else's property who may come down the road to redevelop them. So I'm, I'm still confused about the number of alternatives. And if there would be a problem with having a condition of approval be that the utility lines are buried. And then if for some reason ConEd says that's not a possibility, that, you know, you could potentially come back for amended site plan approval, but you could at least get started with that as a condition.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't mind to do that. I just, I, you know, if they say that for some reason I absolutely can't bury them and I have to move them across the street, I, I'm, I'm not sure why they would say that. But if they say that, you know, I, I don't wanna not build the building that I, that I had here. We've worked so hard because they say that. I mean, I don't, I don't know that they're gonna say that.
Yeah, I think.
Chairman, uh, just, I'm sorry, just very quickly, because we, uh, I think, uh, one of the board members asked a question because of the property's relationship to the fire department. We raised that issue about, you know, just because the, the fire department is, is right next door, would that be considered fire access? And apparently, under the code, it doesn't qualify. So while it, it's a good question and it's something that we thought, well, maybe that's, that's a possibility. We raised it and it turns out it's probably not, uh, it would not work.
It was a good question. I mean, it's pretty obvious. They're right there, but.
I think, I think it's the last building in the whole town that was good, that would burn down. But, but still, uh, code is code, right?
Okay, uh, so what are we doing here? So this is, right, board's opportunity to ask questions. Uh, we'll hope that, was Mr. Tramelli done?
I was just gonna, just, uh, one quick comment on the utilities. The only hesitation I would have, I, I know the applicant is anxious to get going and, and is looking to condition the relocation on a CO. My only concern is that, you know, the, the building goes up and then ConEd, although unlikely, they come back and say you can't bury it. And then you have a building.
That would be a condition of the permit, not of the CO.
Okay.
I mean, I know Angelo said CO. But I don't think we would ever make a condition like that of the CO because you're right, if they, the building's already built. So it would be a condition of, I, I would believe it would be an issue, a, a condition of the issuance of the building permit.
Yeah, I agree with that. It seems like the path of, uh, um, least resistance. At least, and, and it's an efficient approach in terms of timing for the builder.
I know. So we, waiting for ConEd to commit to doing, putting them underground doesn't seem like it's an option at this point. We're gonna have to make it a condition that it will be done and address it after if they reneg, or if they're not able to do that. Is that right, Margaret?
Or it would be done, uh, previous or prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Yeah.
Not, yeah.
Except there's only one alternative, if it does, if they're not putting it under, and that's moving it across. Yeah, okay. Well, we can play that out, can we, Margaret, at this point?
No, I, I think that, um, you know, let's say ConEd said you can't do anything with the lines, then the applicant would have to actually significantly modify the building. Again, not sure why ConEd would say you can't. I, you would assume that they would prefer that the lines be buried. And so I, I think you're probably pretty safe to make that a condition of approval. If for some reason Angelo comes back to you and says, and has evidence that ConEd says they're not permitting me to do this, then I think you, he would have to present a, an alternative to you. But I, I definitely think that would be a condition of the building permit because otherwise it's, it's too late.
Right, and that's the applicant's choice, right? If they wanna move forward without ConEd committing to something, they certainly could. But if they have to change their building.
No, but they couldn't move forward without ConEd committing because we wouldn't issue a building permit. So they, they could move forward. I mean, there's, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a process here under any circumstances. The first process is, um, if you're ready to approve this, you're basically going to tell the applicant to come back next month with, you know, when you have a drafted resolution with all the conditions of approval spelled out. So that, that's one additional month. And then there's the plan review process, which we do try to be extremely efficient, but that's gonna take some time. So that does give, you know, and again, I know ConEd is, is difficult to deal with, but this seems like a pretty significant issue to me. And again, if somebody disagrees or if I'm misunderstanding something, let me know. But, um, you know, so it's a way to allow the, um, builder to move forward with the plan review of the construction documents to get everything else lined up. But we would not, he would not be able to construct until the issue with ConEd was resolved.
No, that's perfect. So the issue of issuance of the permit is the, the one item that will not get.